Good evening. Welcome to Athens City Council. Tonight is a, what we call, a regular session. We'll be reading ordinances and dealing with business this evening. We're going to begin by establish a quorum. Looks like all council members are present, so we do have a quorum to go through the meeting. We'd like to accept a set of minutes regarding the regular session of city council that was held on November 18th, 2013. Could we have a motion to accept those minutes?
I motion.
Okay. All those in favor of accepting the minutes for November 18th signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. We have accepted this set of minutes. Communications, Mayor Abel.
Mayor Abel.
Mayor Wile.
I thought it was easy communications from you guys first.
It was a long weekend for Jim.
Do we have any? No, I don't have anything. I guess we'll... Yes.
I have one communication. Tomorrow, December 3rd, is the United Nations Enable International Day for Persons with Disabilities. And given that that is tomorrow, there's a number of students at Ohio University in conjunction with the Commission on Disabilities that are teaming up this year to have an event, which will be tomorrow evening from 4:00 to 8:00 p.m. in Grover Center. There's a number of guest speakers that are going to be coming in. There are also going to be international students from around the world who are going to be Skyped in, who are kind of describing what they're doing on International Disabilities Day. And kind of the keynote speaker for the event tomorrow evening at 7:00 o'clock is going to be Representative Debbie Phillips, who's going to be attending and speaking as well. So it should be an interesting first-time event. This is an event that's been going on since 1998, but this will be the first time that Athens has embraced this particular disabilities event.
What time is the speaker?
I'm sorry?
What time is the speaker?
I believe that Representative Phillips is going to be speaking at 7:00.
At Grover?
In Grover, in room 115 West.
Thank you.
Which is the large lecture bowl in Grover Center. The atrium will also be set up with a number of local and county agencies who'll be talking about things that they provide in terms of accessibility services, disability services, and whatnot.
And public is welcome?
Public is very welcome. As a matter of fact, encouraged, all are encouraged to attend this event tomorrow evening.
Any other communications from council members? Now, Mayor Wile.
Okay. Just a couple of things, just two really. One is, of course, the Uptown Business Association is going to have its tree lighting on Thursday, December 5th. That's this Thursday, between 6:00 and 8:00 p.m. The biggest change I see is that the Santa, Santa will be at 5:00 on North Court, I believe, building instead. But again, this is our yearly, you know, Christmas soiree at Uptown, just be aware of it and come to that. That says Thursday. The other one, of course, this will be about the la... We have two more meetings after this one to get all the ordinances cleared. And that's the only thing I want to make sure everybody knows, that we're probably going to have a special session next Monday. That's all I have. Anything to add?
No.
Okay.
Auditor grab?
No report.
Not a record?
No reports.
No? Excuse me. Okay, we will move on to ordinances for third reading. Ordinance 12913. An ordinance amending the Athens City Code to replace the terms handicap or handicapped to persons, to replace the terms handicap or handicapped to persons with a disability, and to replace the term handicapped referring to the accommodation of a facility or parking space to accessible parking for persons with disabilities. Introduced by Councilmember Patterson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, this was an ordinance that was introduced several weeks ago, where it's going through Athens City Code and revising or updating a lot of the terminology. Anywhere that was in reference to an individual, it's been changed to persons with disability or disabilities, and in speaking to accommodations for things such as accessible parking, accessible spaces, things of that nature. So it's bringing ourselves in line with what is proper American Disabilities Act terminology.
Make a motion for, to accept, to approve this.
I would like to make a motion to accept ordinance 129-13.
Second.
Second. We have a recommendation and a second to accept ordinance 129-13. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Ordinance 129-13 is adopted. Ordinance 131-13. An ordinance authorizing the purchase of softening salt for the water treatment plant. Member Butler, do you have anything to add?
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, just a request to accept this ordinance 131-13. It's quite simply just a housekeeping $214,000 purchase, regular housekeeping.
Second.
Not very sexy, but needs to be done.
Okay, we have, we have a second here? Okay, I didn't know where that came from. I thought I heard it. Okay. All those in favor of ordinance 131-13 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The ordinance is accepted. Ordinance 132-13. An ordinance amending ordinance 1813 Title 45 Historic and Architectural Preservation, Section 45.03 Board Membership. Introduced by Councilmember Paul.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that we adopt 132-13.
Second.
We've talked about this. This is, the Historic and Architectural Commission has asked to jigger their board membership a bit to having not any non-voting alternatives, have all seven voter, members voting, members. And we've talked about this several times.
All those in favor of ordinance 132-13 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. This ordinance has been adopted. Moving on to ordinance 133-13. An ordinance authorizing the demolition of the house located along East State Street in front of the community center. Introduced by Councilmember Paul.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that we adopt 133-13.
Second.
This is the house with the giant pecan tree next to it, not the tourism house. We've talked about this, the need to, to get rid of a, a tractable nuisance, I would term it, sooner than later.
All those in favor of ordinance 133-13 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. This ordinance is adopted. We're moving on to ordinances for second reading. Ordinance 136-13. An ordinance authorizing a stop-loss medical insurance contract and declaring an emergency. Introduced by the Finance and Personnel Committee.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that we suspend the rules for ordinance 136-13.
Second. We have an ordinance to suspend the rules on ordinance 136-13. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The rules have been suspended.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that we adopt ordinance 136-13.
Second.
And this particular ordinance will authorize a service safety director to renew our contract with United Healthcare for what's called our stop-loss medical payment. And you may recall that several weeks ago, we had a discussion in what we have done this year in order to save the city some money on the premiums, we've increased the deductible to, from $100,000 to $110,000. So this will save some money and will put us, I think, below the national average of what the increases have been for this kind of insurance that the city carries.
Questions or comments? The rules have been suspended, so we're going, we have a motion to adopt ordinance 136-13. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The ordinance has been adopted. Ordinance 138-13. An ordinance providing for the issuance of not to exceed $225,000 of notes by the City of Athens, Ohio, in anticipation of the issuance of bonds for the purpose of paying part of the cost of acquiring a new fire truck and related equipment, and declaring emergency. Remember Nysley? Moving right along.
Second reading.
Okay. Ordinance 139-13. An ordinance providing for the issuance of not to exceed $750,000 of notes by the City of Athens, Ohio, in anticipation of the issuance of bonds for the purpose of paying part of the cost of improvements to this municipality's wastewater treatment plant, and declaring Moving on to ordinance for first reading. Ordinance 142-13. An ordinance granting a variance from the Athens City subdivision regulations to A.W. Taylor for property located outside the corporate limits but within the three-mile jurisdiction and to allow a minor lot split. Introduced by Councilmember Paul.
Thank you, Mr. President. We talked about this last week, and it's a pretty routine jurisdictional overview of what the City of Athens is allowed to do. The Planning Commission has adopted, has asked us to forward it for adoption. The easement has been included with language with the deed, and it's pretty straightforward. Does the Planning Commission members have any?
No.
Okay.
Good.
I don't need suspension for it.
Okay. Ordinance 143-13. An ordinance authorizing a further extension of the current franchise agreement with Ohio Power Company for the use of the city's right-of-way as authorized by ordinance 94-13, and declaring an emergency. Also introduced by Councilmember Paul.
Thank you, Mr. President. I ask that we suspend this ordinance, suspend the rules, please.
Second.
This is, the deadline is coming up on this. This seems to be a perennial negotiation, and it's because it's a sticky one, and it's mostly having to do with trees, probably. So we want to continue under the ordinance that we have in the past, so we, that doesn't cut off any negotiation or anything that we would have in the future.
We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules on this ordinance. All those in favor of suspending the rules signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Remember Paul, the rules have been suspended.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that we adopt 143-13.
Second.
And this is so that we can continue with our right-of-way franchise agreement with AEP, Ohio Power, and continue negotiation on the sticky subjects of trees and other things, like the con trees.
We have, we have a motion and a second. The rules have been suspended to approve or to accept ordinance 143-13. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Okay. Ordinance 143-13 is adopted. We'll move on to ordinance 144-13. An ordinance amending Athens City Code Title 23 zoning to replace the term handicap ramps to accessible ramps for persons with disabilities. Introduced by Councilmember Patterson.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is kind of a follow-on to the ordinance that was just approved earlier tonight, where it's a change in the language, changing what was handicap ramp to accessible ramp. It is under Title 23, and it has gone through the Planning Commission. I believe the Planning Commission, it was unanimously passed by the commission, so therefore, it's a single-word strike in being substituted with accessibility as opposed to handicap ramp.
And we don't need a public hearing on this because of...
There is a public hearing, thank you. The public hearing is scheduled for December 16th at 7:00 p.m. here in chambers.
Moving on to ordinance 145-13. An ordinance to make appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the City of Athens, Ohio during the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2014. Introduced by the Finance and Personnel Committee.
Thank you, Mr. President. As initially discussed last week, this is the formal presentation of the budget for fiscal year 2014 for the city, which begins on January 1. And many thanks to everybody who's worked so hard on this, and the mayor, and the auditor, and the service safety director, and in reviewing all of the different departmental suggestions and budgets submitted, and piecing it all together for our review. We very much appreciate that. This year's budget has approximate, has $13,384,717 in general fund expenses, and then there are other very specific accounts, proprietary accounts, grant funds for an additional $21 million. So that brings our total budget this year to $34,413,000.
Mayor?
We might modify this, tweak it in several readings, just the numbers. We're still working with some of the TC100, Transaction Class 100s. We had meetings Wednesday and last Wednesday to work out some of the nuts and bolts, just to make sure all the fund lines are appropriate and in their place. I get some stragglers once in a while saying, "Oh, I forgot to add this or that," and hopefully we can fit it in. But it will not substantially change, at least at this point.
Okay. An ordinance authorizing staffing levels, a non-union pay scale, in slotting for the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2014, repealing all ordinances inconsistent therewith, and declaring an emergency.
Thank you, Mr. President. What council members have following the ordinance text is a detailed listing of the employees that has been reviewed by the auditor, service safety director, the mayor, and the human resources office person, our director. And it details the 165 full-time positions that we have in the various departments in the city, and then also the part-time positions that we have. And you may recall that when Halloween came and we had auxiliary police officers, it's from these part-time positions that people are paid. So it's all of what helps this city run, and very important to have this legislation moving through.
I have one question. Will this include the chief information officer position? I think it's still open.
Yes, it does.
Okay.
Yes, it does. We have a full-time IT technician now.
Right.
Who stole from the government channel, Ryan. And then we have still that in there.
Right. Any plans to fill that?
We're still looking at that.
Still looking.
But we wanted to go ahead and have it staffed in here and also funded.
Correct, yes, I understand that.
It's the last section of the staff ordinance. Basically, it's internal services, IT technician, CIA, chief information officer. And that's where you have one of each.
Right.
And again, department has to do is how we want to structure what's going on.
Right.
We're working with the university to help us with, assist us in some of our systems configuration. One of the things that's not in the budget that we're discussing, actually, might be an increase, is actually replacing some of the servers we have at the back end of the lifespan.
Yeah.
That was the evaluation from the IT people at Ohio University. But how we go about doing that is being discussed right now.
As a matter of fact, that would be a capital project that we'll be bringing forth to seeking funding, because the estimate now is, it could be $80,000 to $110,000. But then there really isn't a need to have, everything can be done virtually, any repairs and, you know, fixes as it were. And that's, we're waiting on their proposal, and so we'd have to bring that forward to you. It's not necessarily in the budget.
And have to draw the bid once it's over $5,000.
Right.
That's a little off-target, I know.
Yeah.
Because we're talking staffing at this point.
Yeah.
So I have a question.
Yes.
About staffing. So is this set in stone for the entire year?
No, you've amended it in the past several times in a year. Sometimes not at all, sometimes two or three times, depending on the needs that are out there. Usually it's a question of money and resources. Sometimes we've had it overlap in terms of two, somebody phasing in, somebody phasing out, so there's an overlap in terms of adding two positions and with a sunset date. It's been done before. If you had to go through your ordinances in the past, there's quite a few changes.
I just wanted to clarify that.
Mm-hmm. It is not set in stone.
Other comments? No? Moving on to ordinance, excuse me, no, ordinance 147-13. An ordinance adopting a fringe benefits package for non-union personnel within the City of Athens and repealing all ordinances inconsistent therewith, and declaring an emergency. Again, Finance and Personnel Committee.
Thank you, Mr. President. This particular ordinance has attached to it an 18-page document that defines the fringe benefits for non-union personnel in the city. I will not go through it page by page, but I would like to highlight a few of the things that we're looking at in this particular document. We have some definitions that have been brought out, such as temporary part-time worker employees and seasonal employees. On page five, at the bottom of the page in item D, we've clarified that people who are looking for overtime need to be requesting permission from their supervisor, formerly that had been very specific, the mayor or the service safety director. Page six has, I believe, a definition of salaried full-time personnel. Page seven for you clarifies that it used to be in our statement that seasonal and temporary employees did not have the Ohio Public Employees Retirement System, but funds are withheld for seasonal and part-time workers, so we wanted to make that more accurate. Page eight, we've changed the language slightly on medical insurance. I believe that that may have been that we asked people within one week of hire to make decisions on insurance, and that was deemed that it was just a little bit too short a period of time, so we're recommending the two weeks on that. On page nine, there is some new language that has been added, basically taking out our technical language on item 6A and saying, referring to the Family and Medical Leave Act, which is federal legislation. And so we're putting our city requirements in sync with the federal wording on that. On page 11, there is some additional language on family and medical leave, FML, and just saying that employees, when they are using the Family and Medical Leave Act, as is consistent with federal legislation, that we use it with, by using sick leave, vacation time, comp time, to the extent available. And then page 13, what we've done is make a minor modification, saying that sick leave, at the time that a person leaves employ, that they will be paid, the unused sick leave on a four-to-one ratio, or, excuse me, a one-to-four, one-fourth of it, will be paid out, but that the city reserves the right to do that one week after their final pay, so that we get things cleared out with a final payroll, and then make the unused sick leave as a separate payment, so avoid confusion. And then I think that there will be, on page 18, and this is the first reading of this, but on page 18, there may, and 19, there may be some, I believe, some additional edits on the language, but we will bring that to you in amendment form at the second reading, and highlight that for you, any additional changes that would be made on that, and also the donation of sick leave. We're looking at the language on that. So if there are any additional edits, which I do believe there will be, then we will have an amendment that we will submit with details.
Of note, a benefit that was available to non-union employees is being removed, and that is the paid absence day. If someone didn't utilize a sick day, as it were, over three months or something, they were eligible to have what's deemed a paid absence day, and that's being removed. My understanding from the auditor's office that there were three or four intermittent, you know, use, use, three or four employees, you said, not even regularly, intermittently the ordinance clears.
I'd also like to thank the auditor's office for doing the lion's share of the work, as well as the human resource director, working together to put the, they spotted some inconsistencies and smoothed out some wrinkles. Thanks.
You're welcome, but I really can't take credit. I should mention Leanna Woods, our payroll administrator. I gave her the task of starting this, and then, of course, Deputy Auditor Laura Kreider reviewed it with her experience in human resources, and so that's where we got where we are. But thank you.
Ordinance 148-13. An ordinance amending the 2013 appropriation ordinance. Introduced by Councilmember Nysley.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to suspend ordinance 148-13.
Second.
The purpose of this being that we do have some expenses that are time-sensitive in nature, particularly enabling payroll for community center persons between now and the end of the year.
We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules on ordinance 148-13. All those in favor, say aye. Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Remember Nysley, the rules have been suspended.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to adopt ordinance 148-13.
Second.
And this particular ordinance has two components to it. One, the, one I just previously mentioned, and that is, $15,000 has been identified as being needed by the Community Center Fund to cover personnel expenses through the end of the year. And the second item that is appropriated in this would be money from the Cable Access Fund, and the amount of that is $26,500. And that is for purposes of doing some renovations to the city council chambers that we discussed last week.
We have a motion, and the rules have been suspended. We have a motion to approve ordinance 148-13. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Ordinance 148-13 is approved. We'll move on to ordinance 149-13. An ordinance authorizing the service safety director to enter into an LPA state project agreement with the Ohio Department of Transportation, ODOT, for maintenance resurfacing on State Route 682 between State Route 56, West Union Street, and Township Road 404, Armitage Road, and declaring an emergency. This is introduced by Councilmember Pappy.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move we suspend. I believe that we need to get this in gear before the end of the year, and this resurfacing needs to be done right away.
Second. We have a motion to suspend the rules and a second. And the service safety director is thinking.
Is looking a little perplexed, because I thought this was the, what had originally been designed as $12,000 for our 20%, up to $14,000 was the 682 resurfacing. But it clearly states in the preliminary legislation, the other section. So I guess I'm just reserving the right to come back with a different one next week for their next project, but they did request if we could get this one approved and passed so that they can build it into their system on the bidding, so.
All those in favor of suspending the rules signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Remember Pappy, the rules have been suspended.
I move that we adopt 0149-13.
Second.
So we will...
So we will adopt this current proposal as stated, and then if we need further on down the line, we will add the additional ordinance.
The rules have been suspended on ordinance 149-13, and we are now taking a vote to accept the ordinance. All those in favor of ordinance 149-13, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The ordinance is adopted. Moving on to ordinance 150-13, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to submit an application to the Finance Fund, Ohio, for a pre-development grant for Athens Farmer's Market site, Athens Farmer Market Site Preplanning, and declaring an emergency, introduced by Councilmember Patterson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Don't believe we need to suspend.
I would like so, yeah.
You would like to? Very good.
We're gonna start doing applications Friday, right?
I would like to make a motion to suspend.
Second.
Ordinance 150-13.
Second.
Thank you.
We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules on ordinance 150-13. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Member Patterson, the rules have been suspended.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to make a motion to accept or to adopt ordinance 150-13.
Second.
Thank you. This is an ordinance, as was stated in the title, to allow for the application or authorization to apply for funding through the Ohio Community Development Finance Fund, which is a nonprofit organization. And it would be funding that would be used in the pre-planning phase of looking at various sites throughout the city for Farmer's Market, but also, as was mentioned in council, or in committee last week, that it would be a multi-purpose site, any site that's being looked at. Mayor?
I would add that this is just the first. We're trying to pursue various grants and see if we can assist the Farmer's Market in finding a permanent location. You heard the presentation a good month ago. This is one of the first steps of, I'd say, pre-development grant to look for sites. After that, the Finance Fund also has economic development money that I'd be pursuing, that'd be another grant cycle. There are other opportunities for grants, but I'll keep you informed as they go. Technically, this one requires a 15% match. We'll see what happens when it gets approved. I'll be having conversations with the Farmer's Market Board ongoing to make sure that they're in the loop and willing to back us. So just stay tuned. Any questions? No?
I have a question.
Yes.
In terms of your last comment, in terms of wanting to back us, what did you mean by that?
If you know the history of looking for a permanent place for the Farmer's Market, it kind of unraveled about five years ago, six years ago. Some of it had to do with the pricing, and it also consensus of the Farmer's Markets, the farmers themselves, the board, and again, you know, we're going, we're going into this to look for sites that are acceptable and that will work. There's the question of pricing and location, and then, you know, the timing, and make sure they're all on board. Part of the thing is that we're gonna be doing this, carrying the water for the Farmer's Market. And again, I look at it as an economic, as a job retention expansion question more than anything else.
Right.
The, we would probably be, you know, we would hope that they're on board. I would, I always hope that, especially if we're gonna have to pony up some money as a match. I will explore the fact whether it has to be a dollar match or an in-kind match and what that means exactly. I suspect it's more of a dollar match for this type of system, from what I've read. I've been trying, I've been doing my homework as best possible. But again, you know, this is it, there's gonna be, there's gonna be after the other partners, just besides us. We won't do it alone, by any means.
So I think that's important, to clarify that as well.
That's why we're at the 15% and what's needed to do this.
Okay. And have we ever done this in the city before, done this particular?
Fund?
Fund?
No, we haven't. Finance Fund is a nonprofit. You could look them up, financefund.org. I, tell you the truth, I've gone to about two or three of their seminars where they offer and say, "These are the services we do." Most of the time, it's kind of bounced right off my head. When it comes to some of these things, it's refractory to my mindset. So it's, so I'm reviewing some of the things I, you know, I actually had notes from previous, kind of scattered notes on this and saying, "Oh yeah, I listened to their seminar, I got that PowerPoint thing," and, but there are, there are a whole series of grants that you can pursue. The question is how, which ones work and which ones don't.
Right.
That's the other question. When Member Patterson talks about a multi-use thing, if it's gonna be possessed by the city, we have to look and say, "What are we thinking of?" There's a lot of possibilities out there, but the question, are they realistic or not? And then it comes down to location, what would fit? So it's, you know, we're trying, we're trying, you know, again, by code, we give them a space at the community center, but that's not gonna fit by any means. The next question is, what do they do, and do we wanna see it lost? I think we all agree it's an asset. The question is, where is, where's it gonna take, where's the next step? Where does it go now? You know? And what's it look like when it gets done?
Thank you for clarifying.
Okay.
On ordinance 150-13, the rules have been suspended. We're taking a vote now on adoption of the ordinance. All those in favor of adoption of ordinance 150-13, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The ordinance has been adopted. We have a one-reading resolution, R1213, a resolution supporting Athens County Commissioners' objection to the K and H2 injection well permit located near Torch, Ohio, in the county of Athens. Someone wanna speak to this?
I will speak to this. We discussed this last week as a supportive, we wanted to support what the county commissioners were working through in terms of their objection to the K and H2 injection well. So I think for council members, if you read through, these, many of the whereas's, we've discussed in the past in other ordinance language or resolutions that we've passed before, we just, the language seemed very appropriate for what our concerns were, and we, of course, made it more appropriate to this particular objection. So that's what it reads.
Questions or comments?
Again, the concern is, is the toxicity of the brine and the injection fluid and its inconsistencies, as well as the fact that it's not really measured, the amounts that are going in, and the quantity or the strength of it. That is a concern. Part of the problem, of course, is because the source is with shale gas, it seems to have an exemption. That itself is, shows that there's something wrong with the system. And I say that because if you have a toxic waste and you say, you know, it's coming from here, you'd be, you'd have to follow an extreme amount of rules, whether it's cradle grave monitoring of the radioactivity. But as soon as you say it's shale gas origin, origins, it seems to get loose, the legislation gets loose, the quality control gets looser, and that is concerned when you have that inconsistency without, whether it's loopholes at the EPA level, or the Department of Natural Resource level, or the industrial level, these seem to be a problem. So I understand the concern and I...
I know that whenever I see a brine truck pass on the highway, I give it a wide berth. When it says brine, you know, many of you have seen these, I don't know, I just seem to notice them right away. And I do, I give them a wide berth. And sometimes, you know, they're speeding past me over the speed limit, and I just, I hope that we never, any community has, you know, a spill, 'cause it's difficult to clean up.
Yes, sir.
I just wanted to comment briefly as well and acknowledge my support for this resolution. I think as elected officials, when we take an oath, we're really sincere in considering the welfare of the community and the well-being of the people that we represent. And this is extremely relevant in being mindful of the health issues that are potential at risk for our air and water quality. So again, I think, I'd like to see a copy of this sent to many officials in Columbus. Thank you.
I'd like to point out, I was up in Barnesville, up in that area this weekend, and on a, less than a 25-mile stretch of fairly local road, 53 brine trucks passed me. They were all like heading out to the south. So it's amazing. And that was on a Sunday. So that was in an area that last year had almost no, no development of oil and gas shale. And now it's just like the freeway. And this is a twisty little road. And so I don't want that on our roads. Our roads are dangerous enough as it is.
Member Patterson?
I've kind of mentioned this before, I'm gonna mention it again. I mean, we're talking about injecting fluids into the ground, where's been seismic activity, and, you know, whether it's related or not, at this point in time, it's neither here nor there. But what is important is, we're talking about cement wellheads that are, the standards for maintaining them is kind of the lowest level when it comes to this whole industry in terms of monitoring five-year cycle to go and look at them in a 30-minute test, where you can have any seismic activity that could put any kind of crack within this, within these casements, which is a big concern of mine, I too, in full support of this resolution, as I have been with all of them that address hydraulic fracturing and, more importantly, the injection wells, 'cause I think the injection wells are, they're the real hotspot for me.
We are aware, and all of us, on city council, we are aware that our power really extends to the city limits. However, what we're doing here is supporting actions taken by the county commissioners. And we hope that their actions bear fruit. Any other comments? Resolution, do we, we haven't had a motion to adopt yet?
Yeah. So, Mr. President, I move to adopt Resolution R1213.
And then I guess we need a second.
Second.
All those in favor of adoption of resolution R1213, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The resolution is adopted. Have a quick announcement. We will have a special meeting of council next Monday, and we will go through our, the same agenda, and we'll talk more about the budget. And then the next week, we'll, we'll need to vote on that. And so I'm asking our, any council members planning to be out of town either of those two Mondays? We know that you're out next Monday, but you're here for the third Monday. So at this moment, we look as though we're okay. Okay. Are there any other announcements that we need to make? We will have a committee meetings, and we will have a special session next Monday. Do we have any committees who need to meet that we know of right now? Coming to the end of the year?
Probably Finance.
Okay.
Paul, are there any...
You'd miss it if we did.
Seriously, if...
Do we need the transportation because of this other piece, or...
I will know more shortly.
Tomorrow. Well, we'll know tomorrow morning at 10:15.
Okay, so we may have a few things to deal with. Okay. At this time, we do have an opportunity for citizens who have sat through this meeting to speak on legislative items and city services that were not covered in the meeting. Anybody have anything to say? If not, we are adjourned.